This is a regular meeting of the Virgin City Council to order. Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to everyone who's here tonight. I'm assuming that everyone is here for an item that will be appearing on the agenda later on, namely the budget session discussion. Do we have any other visitors on our schedule? No. All right, we'll move right forward to the approval of the minutes and the warrant. Did anyone have any questions on the warrants that were circulating? All right, hearing no questions. The council just received the minutes from the last two meetings about an hour ago, and I think we should choose to defer that approval of those minutes until our next meeting if everyone agrees.
It's fine.
We need a motion to let her pass. Okay. All right, we'll hold those off until the next meeting. Were there any citizens' comments that aren't related to an item that will be appearing on the agenda?
I have one edit for the first seven minutes of the two meetings ago.
Oh, okay.
The dog warrant paragraph, the very last word should be "it" and not "him."
He said the last word on the dog warrant paragraph should be "it" and not "him."
It's not his fault or something.
Yeah, not him.
These are for the camera, not for...
These are actually for the camera. No, sorry.
There's no speaker here, it's just for the camera, but we'll talk louder.
We'll do our best to use our voices.
You want to trade places, Irma?
It'll be on YouTube later.
All right, hearing no other comments, we'll move forward into our business session. First item on the agenda is planning commission appointments.
So, we have three sets of appointments, recommendations this evening. For the Virgin's Planning Commission, a two-year term, Mike Winslow, Tim Cook, and Donell Byrong wish to be reappointed to the Virgin's Planning Commission.
Second. Motion moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. To the Addison County Regional Planning Commission, reappointment for a one-year term, both Shannon Haggott and Cheryl Brinkman wish to be reappointed to the Addison County Planning Commission.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And to the Addison County Regional Planning Commission Transportation Advisory Committee, Brent Rukowski and as an alternate Shannon Haggott both wish to be reappointed.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
The end of appointments.
Regarding the Virgin's revolving loan fund as it pertains to Barnum Town Distributors, in conversation with Chuck Hussinger, who is the principal owner of Barnum Town Distributors, and Joan, at the end of last week, we had to change the collateral that we were seeking to secure the loan against. The canning machine was actually a lease, so we were not able to get first position on that. Joan, was there anything else as far as adjusting that collateral agreement?
No, that was the only thing, just what was being asked.
Okay. So, I would ask the council to approve the change in that collateral, removing the canning machine.
I will make said motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will abstain due to potential conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Motion carries.
Okay. 2020 budget?
2020 budget. So, thank you all for being here. Before we begin this discussion, I have a statement that I would like to make, so I'm going to read it to you all. I hope you'll bear with me, and then we will begin our discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, I'd like to register a...that I'd like to have this letter not read today because I think it gives an opinion of yourself and not that of the whole council, and therefore I think it gives a bias to potential voters.
So noted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This city council finds itself confronted with years of defer...in no small part to maintain a municipal tax rate that is affordable for our residents. Not only has this body elected to defer maintenance of our infrastructure in the name of affordable taxes, we have been unable to fund such things as a recreation department, adequately maintain and replace our sidewalks, or fully fund any of our other assets. All of these deferred items become more expensive each day, and we are forced to address them immediately. There are three things that we need to consider as we go forward. Number one, we have no control over the school budget beyond the vote that each of us casts when the school board presents their budget to the public. The city of Virgin's acts as agent in the collection of the school tax levied. We neither receive benefit nor control the school budget process. Number two, we as a city council are charged by our city charter to adopt a budget that fairly represents the needs and desires of all residents of Virgin's. Each of us sits at this table because of our convictions, but in the end, we are duty-bound to serve our city as we see best, and it is impossible to make everyone happy. Our resources are finite. The city council must adopt a budget that is reasonable, given the resources at hand. We cannot manufacture more widgets to increase our bottom line. We can only raise taxes. The budget proposed by Manager Chabot includes a reduction of our police department by two officers. It also includes additional funding for recreation, the replacement of an aging police vehicle, and sidewalk improvements. We cannot ignore an increase in the cost of benefits for city employees of nearly $100,000. There are no ambitious projects in this budget. I regret that reductions must be made in our police department budget. However, whether it be 36%, 38%, or 41% of the city budget total, that number is not sustainable without a significant increase in our municipal tax rate. Our police department has an outstanding reputation statewide, and suggesting that a staffing adjustment will cripple their ability to serve and protect our city is an insult to their professionalism and tantamount to fear-mongering. We begin our discussion this evening facing a 12 and 1/2 cent increase to our municipal tax rate based on the proposed budget before us. On a home valued at $200,000, that equals $230. While our budget is separate from that of the school budget, residents of Virgin's can also expect an increase of 8 cents or $160 on that $200,000 home. Also, I have proposed to Manager Chabot an increase in our sewer rate of $44 per quarter or $176 per year effective January 1, 2020. Bear in mind that this increase will only net approximately $55,000 annually, a drop in the bucket. However, it will allow us to build capital reserves to address the sewer system, and that needs to happen sooner rather than later. This council adopted a set of goals that includes fully funding assets such as the pool and the skate park...skate park, excuse me, improving the experience at the basin and providing the amenities for which our community is asking. These all come with a cost, but I believe with strategic planning, we can accomplish them all. My role as mayor is to ensure that our discussions are fair and open and that our decisions are in the very best interest of the city of Virgin's. I have complete faith in the members of the city council to consider the options before us carefully. And with that, I'm going to actually ask Manager Chabot to sort of recap the update that he has presented us with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Mayor, Brett's hitting right on the head. You know, $100,000, $94,000 increase in healthcare costs alone for all city employees is...presented a significant challenge for me on my first budget as a city manager. As I said many times when I was a member of the city council, we don't have a spending problem, we have a revenue problem. We have desires, we want our city to grow and aspire, we want to take care of our infrastructure. The budget that I've presented does not do the comprehensive repairs on the pool that we need to do. It does not...it throws pennies at our crumbling sidewalks. It does not paint the recycling shed down off Canal Street. It does not put anything away towards the McDonough pump station issue that we face constant overflows based on our current weather patterns. It really tries to balance the needs of my four departments against the revenue that we have available to spend on this budget. Because of the large increase in healthcare and the size of the police department, they have a proportionate share, and the healthcare costs for the police department were scheduled to go up $47,000. So, that brought the police department budget into acute focus from my perspective. As I tried to understand how to move forward, I gave a lot of reflection to the time that I've spent as city manager and as a city councilman, and the amount of time that we spent advocating to pick up the Ferrisburg and Addison County Sheriff's Department contracts indicated to me that we have capacity above and beyond our one square mile as a city. We continue, in spite of what I think has been a good working relationship between Chief Merkel and I, to miss our revenue as well. Two years ago, the revenue for the Virgin's Police Department was $80,000. They achieved about $64,000 of that revenue plan. We are not a quota-based police department, but revenue does go into the bottom line. Chief Merkel has offered to increase revenue for 2020. I don't see a trend over the last several years that would sustain or allow me to be able to adopt that opinion towards offsetting potential cuts. I would...I'm going to say, excuse me, that in 30 years, I have never had an executive branch leak out information about potential cuts, including names of affected individuals, and I'm embarrassed on behalf of our city government that individuals have chosen to do that. It's inappropriate, and to my perspective, it's unacceptable. So, I apologize on behalf of myself for having shared that delicate information with individuals who perhaps weren't responsible enough to handle it appropriately. So, to the members of my Virgin's Police Department, I speak very clearly to you. You have my support. You always have, you always will. This is not a reflection on you in any way. However, as a city council person, for many years, as I faced incremental increases in the police department, I was very vocal that these increases are not sustainable. The police department budget chokes off everything else that we want to try to accomplish in our community. At 38%, 40%, it's just...it's not sustainable. So, that is how I came to the decisions that I came to. That is what is reflected in the budget that I have presented to the city council. That's all I have.
All you have to say. So, before we take questions and comments from the audience, I would like to know if there are any questions for the city manager from...or comments from the council.
Well, I'll ask this question. If by some very sad chance this reduction goes through, how with July 1 being Monday, how is that going to be handled?
In reviewing the minutes from last year, I'm actually a day ahead of schedule. The budget was adopted on the 26th of June last year. So, whatever I have to do to get the rate set and get an approval, it will be accomplished.
But we didn't have any reduction in staff last year.
To clarify, I think the question is, if we do make these staffing cuts, what is your plan moving forward with that?
Well, it depends on how far we get tonight, but you know, you can set a tax rate tonight, and for all intensive purposes, you're done. I mean, that's really the council's goal or objective responsibility is to set the tax rate. You know, we could squeeze in another budget session, Lynn, if you...if we felt necessary, it could absolutely be done.
Well, the problem is that I have is that we can't discuss the police budget and reduction in staff without looking at the whole budget and reductions in other staff members. We haven't had that discussion yet, so...
This is the time for you to have that discussion.
Okay. So, is it necessary at this point? Can you tell me the justification of putting another person onto Public Works as a full-time?
Sure. So, that's just a reallocation that individual had been being paid for out of wastewater. I informed the city council at the end of September or beginning of October last year that having spoken with DPW Supervisor Jim Laro and Wastewater Treatment Plant Supervisor Rick Chaput, that the arrangement had been that this individual was being split between those two departments. That was not working for those individuals. We elected at that time as a team to not fill that position over the course of the winter. And when we came out of winter, Jim and Rick and I had another series of two conversations, and the decision was made that that individual would be better served...would better serve the community out of DPW with one DPW individual being trained as backup for the wastewater treatment plant. So, it's really just a reallocation of the same resource.
Okay, then I'll ask this question. As far as the Abby's position, whatever that position's called, is that going to go to full-time?
It has been full-time since the council approved her going full-time. And again, off the top of my head, I want to say that was November, December. So, yes, that is proposed in this budget that that position continues going forward. It is accounts payable. As I had said to the council when I advocated for that position to go full-time, we anticipate that the city clerk treasurer is retiring in the spring. I have been able to muscle through my new role, taking over for former manager Holly. I'm not convinced, based on the nuances and the intricacies of our finances, that somebody else is going to be able to jump in and muscle through that. So, it is part of a long-term succession plan to try to maintain continuity of service when our city clerk treasurer resigns.
Yeah, I remember that discussion. I guess my question is, at this point, with the budget the way it is, is it possible to go back down to 20 hours with her?
Anything is possible. You are compromising the...you know, we will be compromised next spring, absolutely.
Well, I feel like we're compromising with the police, so it's a...I understand where we're coming from here, and I really do appreciate all the efforts everybody's put into this, I truly do, and I'm not criticizing anyone's job here. But my position is, and it will continue to be, that we need to keep our police force the way it is. And I've said this in another meeting, and I'll say it here where there's different people here, that three of us here were brought up here, and we know what this city was like many years ago when we had a horrible, horrible situation here. And it was...we were truly the laughingstock of Vermont, and if anyone lived here during that time, they would know exactly what I'm talking about. When Chief Merkel came, we knew...we built the police station knowing that we were going to build the police staff along with it and the patrolmen because we were hoping at the time that we would have 24-hour service and two people on, at the time, two men, but now we are very lucky to have a lady, on at all times for safety of the public and for their own safety. So, taking the history and then coming to here and knowing that...and I was part of this board for a few years now, I don't even know how many, that I was part of making those decisions where we maybe don't do this sidewalk or we don't do this because we kept taking into account the overall tax of the school and the city together. We were trying to be very careful. Well, the roosters come, and we need to pay the piper. And we either start getting the police department that we planned for, we built for, we voted on, and we also want, by every meeting that we've had, someone directing the recreation. People on my emails and Facebook have asked for a new doc, asked for, you know, their sidewalk to be...Bowman Road is...got a river going through it. There's been lots of things that need to be done, and I think we just have to pick the projects that we can do now, knowing that we're going to have to go up at some point. Is it today or is it next year? It's going to have to happen. And I'm hoping that this decision of this council tonight is to support this police department and look, not making a decision tonight unless something...a miracle happens, and try to find some money in this budget. And the other thing I don't understand is, how did we get to a deficit position that we're in when every single meeting we come to, everything's looking good except for the police department? How did that happen? It didn't happen in just the police department. So, where is that money...where has that money gone to? And where is it in the here when we can't see it? I want to know those answers, and I'm not sure that anybody can give that to me tonight. If you can, that's wonderful.
I believe I can.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to start at the beginning of your statement, Alderman Donnelly, and you know, we were...the Virgin's Police Department was in Ferrisburg 452 times over four years, no compensation.
I understand.
That practice has ended. That means that those officers are now, again, within our one square mile, taking care of our safety and security. So, it's not apples-to-apples. I have done a lot of work with Chief Merkel to better express or better expose our commitment to our community. We've done a lot of work on downtown patrols, on directed patrols, on, you know, dealing with calls as they come in that we've got rampant speeders. You know, there are other ways to deal with loitering instead of sending two officers to speak to a resident. And the chief and I, I hope, will continue to work together to maximize the asset that we have. So, I don't think it's fair to say we have to continue to arc up when we're not really even looking at how we can better utilize our current staff. So, there's that statement. I can go through the budget, I'll be happy to go through for you year-to-date where we In administration, the clerk, treasurer, and admin accounts are all over. The assistant clerk and the clerk's salaries last year were not set until August. They were never put into the budget, so that's why you're seeing an overage there.
What page are you on?
I'm on page two.
Got it.
So, currently, year-to-date, we are at 100% of our budget there. You know, we are seeing increases as that individual. The accounts payable clerk was made full-time, so there was...the budget was not set for her to health insurance, Lynn, as a part-timer. You know, supplies, advertising, annual report, you know, there...I'm not sure how to go line by line and say, you know, we sent out more mail than we did last year. I don't know where you'd want to go there. Electricity is off, heating fuel is off. The audit came in higher because I don't have the proficiency that former manager Holly had. It took extra time for the auditors to spend with us to deliver a good product there. So, the audit fee is off. You know, we're under in multiple other accounts. IT, we...you know, we are facing a significant issue regarding our current IT as we are going to lose the Windows 2008 platform on January 1st. The cost of that project is doubling every time I have a conversation with them. Police department, again, you know, 97%. I think the chief's in very good shape. Over time, we talked about a lot, he and I, 135%. We had to change...the Virgin's Animal Hospital no longer wanted to participate in our...in fostering housing stray dogs for us. That was a mid-season change that we had to go to Homeward Bound down in Middlebury. Again, health insurance is off, disability is off. You know, the chief and I talk a lot about ancillary spending. Supplies are 120%, uniforms 124%, training and dues 109%, heating fuel, as I indicated back to the council in the fall, we did not execute a pre-buy, so we're seeing overages in heating fuel across the board, not across the board, to specific departments. Vehicle maintenance, as Chief Merkel has lamented for years, you know, we defer purchases that increases the maintenance on our aging vehicles. I think that line is consistently over. Public works, equipment maintenance, you know, we were all at a meeting when the Skidsteer broke down on Spring Street, you know, that's...you were $9,000 over in equipment maintenance. It's not something that Jim Laro would take lightly. Again, he's at 99% of his budget. Electrical in the...down at the shop is 112%. Heating fuel, again, is off. We knew we had an issue with the Boothwoods paving project that went $30,000 over budget. We knew we had an issue with highway winter materials due to the winter that we had. We knew we were going to have an overage there.
Matt, I'm sorry, what was...what went over $30,000?
I'm sorry, one more time.
What project went over $30,000?
The Boothwoods paving project went over by $30,000. So, Jim showing 99% of budget. General expenses, VLCT is overage due to the manager's search that went over $6,500. Wasn't a budgeted item. Unemployment comp, we had a business manager overseeing two projects for us, and I just...I don't think we saw that coming as far as the unemployment. Voter appropriations are in line.
Is everybody missing the percentages on the side besides me or...
He's actually reading from the budget report, not this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. So, where did the...I thought the $60,000 that we found from the Main Street Fund went in... into the Boothwoods and to the salt?
No, the $60,000, the $64,000 is being entirely appropriated into the salt shed. They are giving us 247 and 64 and change.
Okay.
I'm a little reluctant, because former manager Holly's here, and he had a mind for numbers that will forever rival mine, but it was 64 and change.
Okay. I'll leave it to someone else now.
Other questions from the council, comments?
So, the current budget results in a tax rate increase of 12 cents?
Twelve and a half.
Twelve and a half cents. And if you were to add in the two staff in the police department, that's additional about $130,000, $140,000, does that sound right?
147.
147, so that's about another 6 cents. So you're looking at 12 and a half cents as is, or 18 and a half cents with the police department level funded, which is a 50% increase from what it is as proposed.
Correct.
How does that translate on 200,000?
The reduction gives us a tax rate of 93 cents. We're currently at 83 and a half percent, or 83 and a half cents, excuse me. The new, the tax rate based on this budget is 94 cents.
Jeff, you had the number for 200,000, just increase in price?
Yeah, 12 and a half cents is $230 on a 200,000 home.
It'd be almost, yeah, it'd be almost $380,000, $350,000, $350.
$350, right.
Increase.
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 Yeah, yeah.
And that's including the school budget?
No.
No.
It's not.
Including the police budget.
Yes.
Including the police budget.
We need a call today on the school budget, and it appears it's gonna be 9 cents.
So my numbers are incorrect.
With another 9 cents on top of that.
Right. You had that at about 130, your school budget, 8 cents.
It was $160 and 8 cents.
So probably closer to 200, right?
Yes, ma'am.
It's unfortunate that we can't do anything with the school budget, as I'm concerned, because that is out of control. But in light of the opioid crisis that we're going through, more people have guns, crazy nuts outside, I can't understand why the police department...
A quick question, clarify, and I'm going on already as independent, so, as you said you're independent, you've been a lot in. I saw that an increase proposed of 13 and a half cents on the tax rate. And reading further, trying to figure out where that was coming from, it appeared that 4% of that was an increase in health insurance, which as stated is out of your control. And 3 cents of that also represented over signatures from last year's budget, is that accurate?
Yes.
So that was raised to 6 and a half. But I heard Bill Mendez said that it was 12 cents, plus, if you're taking into consideration the police department, 6 and 13. So we're above, we're 13 and a half cents on the tax rate, or 12 cents, not including the police department?
We are currently 12 and a half cents, with the budget as it is proposed, which proposes the cut of two offices.
So instead of 13 and a half, it's 12. So if we take out the health, and the overages from last year, at 7 cents, we're talking about a 5 cent increase in tax rate, if you take those two out of it. Which you have your control over. You can go ahead. And the health insurance, which is still up. I just wanted to make sure about that. Thank you.
Madam Deputy Mayor, and this young lady behind me who just made the comment, for
those of us who have been around, maybe a third of you on the panel here, we don't want to go back to the Paul Lawrence era. You remember that time, and you refer to that as one of the darker histories, darker moments of Virgin's PD. We don't want to go back there. And if it's a matter of a couple of cents to maintain the group and the protectant-to-serv methodology that we have worked a lot of years to bring back online, recovery wasn't easy from that period. And those of you who know, know exactly what I'm talking about. We don't want to go back there. Maintaining the system is a lot easier and a lot more common sense than fixing it when it's completely broken. We don't want to break. So if it's just a matter of a few cents, then I would strongly support what Madam Deputy Mayor and this young lady back here had mentioned. We can't afford to go back. We can't afford to not do it. We need to keep that staff. Building a brand-new police station and not allowing people to use it makes no sense. Buy a new cruiser, don't put gas in it, it makes about as much sense. Gotta keep that fully staffed at current levels, and for a few cents, not a dollar, the sacrifice we would make otherwise would be way too difficult and way too expensive to recover from. We've been there, we've done that, we really need to look back over our shoulders and say, we don't want to go back there. We want to move this thing forward, and keep our people funded, and keep it, keep it balanced the way it is. Things aren't getting any better. As this young lady said, there is more stuff coming down the pipe that we just can't ignore. If you want to let this thing fall into disrepair, wait to see what it's gonna cost us to rebuild. We won't like it. We won't be able to afford it.
Thing is, if it was only a few cents, we probably wouldn't be talking about it. It's more than a few cents, that's the problem.
It's 5 and a half cents.
5 and a half cents.
Speaking globally, in the broad scheme of things, how much it'll cost us to maintain versus how much it'll cost us to completely rebuild, we don't want to go back. We don't want to, don't want to step back on this one.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes.
Yeah, I'm probably outnumbered here, but that's okay. I want to thank the mayor and the city manager for their comments. I agree with you 100%. I think that the police department is overstaffed, eight full-time and one part-time for a one-mile-square town is overstaffed. Mayor, or city manager, I appreciate your comment. I know that you and the chief made a real good effort to go to Ferrisburg, to help them chip in, for what I think is trying to build a regional police department, and they said no. I think their answer is very clear. I'm glad to hear you say that I won't see a Virgin's police car in Ferrisburg unless it is a life-and-death situation. I don't know, I didn't live here a long time ago, I'm a new resident, so obviously, a lot of people think it doesn't matter what I say anyway. Trouble with the good old days is most people weren't really that good, and they certainly weren't old back then. So their perspective is very different. I would also fear that what's happening is what's happening on the national level. Let's build up as much fear as we can, and continue the militarization of our police forces, so that we don't have to live in fear. I choose not to live in fear. I think that two less police officers in this town, I can walk down the sidewalk without looking over my shoulder. So I hope this council chooses not to live in fear.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to speak in favor of dropping the budget from what it is for the police force. The police force has done a great job here. I don't know how we got so many good-looking cops, but we've done a good job. But it's been, this is a safe little city, and I like the idea that it's a safe little city. And I like the idea, what my friend back here said, that people are gonna be coming here who aren't inclined to keep it safe, but we have the police force to take care of that. I've lived here for about 30 years or so, and I would like to say that I'm willing to spend a few extra cents on my tax money to keep this police force just like it is.
Thank you.
Want to do that?
Yes.
So, positive spin, is that having some rough sidewalks is a good thing, and these people are using them. And I think that's a great thing. And I use them myself, I use them with my family and my kids, my kids use them by themselves. I feel safe that when I'm at work, they can leave my house at 28 West Main Street and take it all the way to the city pool, and I don't have to worry about it. And the reason I don't have to worry about it is because of this staff right here. I am very grateful for them. I was just at a baseball game for my son, and I was chatting with a mom who lives in Lincoln, and she asked me what I was doing for childcare for my kids, and my kids are almost in their teens. And I said, well, the good news is that I can buy a city pool pass, and that pretty much serves as my care. And she said, oh, that's right, you're in Virgin's, you're really lucky. I was just talking to a business owner, and she was talking about how she has a business on Main Street in Virgin's, she relocated from Bristol. And she's been able to find a lot nicer employment from our youth in our community, reliable. And she also likes to see the younger youth who just meander around the city minus their parents, because it's a safe thing, it's a trust thing. I do think that our law enforcement has done a fantastic job at sustaining that feeling of comfort. And I'm willing to walk on some jagged sidewalks if I can feel safe doing so. We can have nice sidewalks, but if we don't feel safe walking on them, what's the point? Also, you said earlier that the budget for chokes off everything that we want to accomplish in our community. Personally, I argue that, I think the reason that we have the capacity now to expand and look at revitalizing Virgin beyond what we've already done, is because, not solely, but collectively, certainly part of our law enforcement's efforts, and the community policing that they do. I argue that you're not at all fearless, not at all fearless. You're community policing, you're part of this community, you're part of the good citizens in this community. And that takes a village. Fire department has at least 8 to 13 people staff, EMT, I understand that they're volunteer, but these are all first responders. It's value you're talking about. And again, I argue that there's a lot of value in this, and you're putting a price of $140,000 on it. You can get grants to update your sidewalks, you can get grants for a recreational department, and you have grant writers right here in the city of Virgin's, you have a lot of talent to do that. You also have a lot of talent on this staff that's almost impossible to replace. You can replace them with other law enforcement officers, absolutely, but will they be as quality and as experienced and as certified as these people? Absolutely not. I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's let everyone speak once more, please.
Thank you. I have a few thoughts here. As a city, we have to play the long game, we have to make small investments now, that pay off later. We have done that with the police department for many years, and we have the special police department. And I do not believe with the foundations they have, they can ever go back to the dark days. But in that respect, we still have to make small investments. You know, rough sidewalks are one thing, but I have a neighbor, very elderly, her daily exercise is getting out, walking around the block twice. You know, we have an aging population here in Virgin's, an aging mobile population, it's a healthier population than it is not here, but there are risks to keep jagged sidewalks. You know, we're coming into a great time of change, back to the investments. You know, we have to attract new residents and investors with the Virgin's economic corridor on the horizon. Every small investment we can make now in infrastructure is gonna pay off multiple fold in the 10-year span we're talking about. There are many legs and many departments of the Virgin's municipality, and all of them have to be supported. There have been a great number of citizen groups, task force, that, you know, have volunteered their efforts into fixing up our parks, clearing out brush, and those efforts are always succumb to the fact that we do not have the budget to maintain what we have. And, you know, it's, unfortunately, it's this or that. And it has been the police department for a long time, and it's time to invest in other parts of the city government. And on that same note, a vested community is gonna inherently be a safer community. We have to include everybody and have the population in their city and act, not just hoping that, expecting somebody else to keep them safe. We have to watch each other's backs. And I just want to point out that most of these budget discussions, I'm gonna show my colleagues here, are based around our healthcare costs, how to control healthcare costs. And, you know, if we, I'm just gonna say it, if we had a single-parent healthcare system, we would not be having this discussion. You know, private medical industries have bankrupted families, they bankrupted businesses, and now they're bankrupting municipalities. And that is the overall target here, it is not Virgin's Police Department. Thank you.
Very important. Got it?
Yes. I am not a resident of the city of Virgin's, but I'm involved in a lot of organizations that have taken care of the city of Virgin's. I am not speaking on their behalf, I'm speaking on mine. I agree, I think we'd be going backwards if we cut the cost, and I don't think there's anybody that's sitting on that board up there that would not gladly pay the $300 if they needed an officer at their door at 2 o'clock in the morning because something dangerous was going on. And I understand the money, but don't also take and say about Ferrisburg or Panton, because they approached down at Panton too. And we were fortunate enough, the taxpayers, to have what you have here tonight, where people can come and voice their opinion. Our board was asked, our board commented. The town, the people in the town are gonna demand that we do, by the next meeting, town meeting, that we do have a say, a question and answer on that. We just had a few people representing the whole town, and that's not right. And as far as the police cruiser being in Ferrisburg, let me tell you, if any of you were five miles out of town, and heaven forbid you got in a bad accident, and the person that hit you was high on drugs, you would be so tickled to see a Virgin's cruiser fall off to you, even though you're in Ferrisburg or in Panton. So as far as that goes, yes, they are going to those places without getting help, getting paid back for it. But that might not be the same thing a year from now. We're just finding out about this in our towns, that this was a request. So I'm hoping by next year, our towns, Ferrisburg and Panton, might be able to help with this a little bit. But I'll tell you, it seems so nice to know, and don't forget, these are also the people that are coming in from these other towns to support the stores and new businesses here in Virgin's. We all need this police force, we can't go backwards. As it is, they're putting their lives out there, especially when they're by themselves. I support them 100%, and I know, like I said, I'm not paying you guys a penny, other than me shopping in this city. But please, stop and think, what if it was your house? Would you really think, oh, I don't get help tonight because that's the officer position I got? You can't put a price on life and safety, whether it's fire, rescue, or police. Those should be always your top priorities. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a few issues with this, the police department. And I want to thank you, Lynn, for being as passionate as you are for it and being a supporter, because I was here 30 years ago, in the city of, I was a year 16. But I work at Valley Vista, the drug and alcohol rehab in town, and I've had, been fortunate enough to have Chief Merkel come down, and he meets with my ladies. He gets very personal with them, he meets with them one-on-one if they want to, he relates to them. And that's part of the community base that everybody says they want to have. He does this, is very open with them and honest with them, and sometimes he's in tears, sometimes they're in tears. I have Jill, I talked to about her, about coming down and meeting, because I think a woman's standpoint would be great. Matt, you talked about how you don't think that you need to have two police officers to a call. And I don't know everybody on this force, but I know a lot of them. And you hear things when there's an officer at a, arrives to a domestic between two people, and they have a gun at him. They're by themselves, by themselves. They're by themselves, by themselves.
Specific to that comment, there's only one call.
Okay, but I'm just saying in general, there are some times when you do need to have that second person.
I'd like to just see the, because we do have a regional police department. We have our Virginia's police department. We have the Vermont State Police, which is our primary backup if we, if one of the officers finds themselves in trouble, as one did several weeks ago. And then we also have the Addison County Sheriff's Department, which there's room for improvement in how we get along with that department. They could be more of a resource to us.
I'm speaking to my community.
Yeah, and that's.
But I appreciate that. But I also, living in this town, I don't see the state troopers that often. I live right on 22A. I see Virginia's PD out there. I see them at the softball games. I see them at community events where they're making themselves presentable. People are seeing them. I have a 15-year-old daughter who knows the chief on a first-name basis. She knows she can reach out to them. She knows that their presence is here. My fear is with all the simple assaults, with all the sexual assaults, no, that's too hardcore. When they have to go down, when they have to go down there, they're tied up for seven hours. They're treating those kids like they're one of our city people. But if they're down there for seven hours, who's watching our city? Who's taking care of them? Right now, we don't have enough coverage as it is. You're going to take two people away and how are you going to make up for that? How are you going to stretch a smaller force out to cover all those shifts you're covering now? It's impossible. Are you going to cut it down where we're only going to have service from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM at night? And if you do, what's going to happen from that 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM in the morning? You know, it's, if the taxpayers are willing to pay the money, let us pay the money. You know, these guys, I know it's a budget thing, we're looking at the budget, it's a financial thing, but we're also not looking at what it's going to do in the long haul. I agree with Ms. Brooks down there. Sidewalks, you know what, yes, home sucks. But what are you going to do? I'd rather walk over a sidewalk to know that my daughter's safe in this town, to know she can walk wherever she wants. And guess what? There's going to be a presence somewhere around in this city. I'm not living in fear that something's going to happen to me, that this is going to happen because you can't live that way. But I love this city for what it is, what we have, and what we're working towards. I don't want to go backwards. I don't want to keep paying higher taxes and we're losing everything because honestly, I move out of the city. If I'm going to keep paying higher taxes and we're like, "Oh, well, we're going to lose them, or we're going to give $40,000 to this, or we're going to do this, but we're going to take away from there." What do we need? It's not what we want, it's what do we need?
Thank you. You've been very patient, yes.
And my question is, the police, they cover Ferrisburg, they go for nothing. They're running over to the Job Corps all the time. What, can we get some money out of the Fed or the state or something to help our police and fire department that run over to the Job Corps all the time and they're running all, you know, a lot? I've walked around this town for, what, 48 years, 41 years? I don't know. I've always felt good about it, but, you know, we got a good guy here. They run a tight ship. You don't have druggies and all these other ones coming like you do in Burlington and these other towns. So going back wouldn't be bad, but is there any way to pressure? This lady said maybe Ferrisburg will kick in next year to help out the police, our police, they go there all the time. What about Job Corps? Can't we pressure the state people, Fed, somebody to, and lieu of taxes like the college does for Middlebury?
So to answer your question, I think there's.
We're fighting everything.
So to answer your question, after Chief Merkel and I failed to secure the Ferrisburg contract, I have requested of Chief Merkel to track how many times we are in Ferrisburg for over a six-month period so that prior to their budget, we can go back and try to determine what is an equitable compensation for us doing so. My anticipation is that in the course of the conversations with the Addison County Sheriff's Department, the Vermont State Police, and with Chief Merkel, the Ferrisburg Select Board realized they were not getting the service that they were paying for. So they were, they have contracts with Vermont State Police, they have a contract with the Addison County Sheriff's Department. The level of service that they received was called into question. That led the Select Board to call the Addison County Sheriff's Department and the police department, the state police, to account. And I anticipate that the need for us to be in Ferrisburg is going to be diminished based on Ferrisburg getting what they've been paying for all along. But we're going to continue to track that over the course of a six-month period. Regarding the Job Corps, Chief Merkel and I met with the regional directors for the job, that oversee the Job Corps campus, and the answer frankly is no. We don't anticipate going back to payment in lieu of taxes, which is what we were receiving some years ago. Chief Merkel and I, I think, have worked very closely with the new administration at the Job Corps to both improve the security on campus and their ability to handle their own issues as they arise. And I think we have seen a significant decline over the last five months in the amount of time that we're spending at the Job Corps. Yes, it comes up, but it's going to come up on any other street in town. It's not singular.
You've been patient, Chief. Then your next question.
First and foremost, I want to express my appreciation to everyone who works for the city, whether you're a councillor, mayor, police officer, firefighter, you know, or someone who just takes care of the infrastructure. What you do every day is what keeps the citizens of Virginia's happy. Even though, I'm sure we don't say it enough, thank you. With that said, please understand that we know that the city council has a tough job. We all need, they all need to take the requests and demands for the money to keep the city running and decide who gets what and what projects get priority over theirs. I just want to have a disclaimer. I wrote this in a hurry, sorry. Hopefully I could read my own writing. All while trying to keep the residents happy by doing what they need, what needs to be done without raising taxes beyond reason. This is not an easy job. I first heard about the potential cuts in the police force through my friend Jackie on Wednesday morning. I didn't know there was going to be a budget meeting for the city on Tuesday night and honestly, even if I knew, like most of you, I probably would have been less than excited or motivated to go anyway. If I knew there would be major changes, I might have considered going, but it's still pretty unlikely. I've served as a co-chair for the Virginia's Community Group for the elementary school for the past four years, and trust me, I know it's hard to get people involved, even though it might affect them. It's unfortunate, but it's the state of the world. This group of people here, now that there's kind of an emergency situation, shows it. So while I've, since Wednesday, I've talked to Chief Merkel a lot, as well as friends, my cousin who actually worked for the Virginia's Police Force in the past, and city council members. I have learned a lot in a very short period of time. To give a little background, I come from a retail background, which is not the same as a police officer, other than the fact that sometimes you're busy and sometimes you're not, but it's hard to predict and you need to be prepared. I realize having two officers on most of the time might seem like overkill. To me, it's simple logic. The state police are good, but they're also at least usually 10 minutes away, and 10 minutes can make a huge difference. Also, however, I also understand that there's not an unlimited pile of money. I would prefer that my taxes don't go up any more than necessary, like probably all of you here. I also understand there are things that need to be fixed. The sidewalks are in need of major repair. Many of our sitting buildings are old and of course, we all know the water and sewer guys have their work cut out for them. I'm sure everyone who works for the city works hard and nobody wants to cut any positions, but we have to find the money somewhere. The company I work for has recently gone through a few tough years and we went from 40 people down to eight at one point. Let me tell you, you learn how to multitask and prioritize what to spend money on and what not to spend money on. With that, I have a suggestion. Here's the situation as I see it. I don't have any experience running a city, so I might be completely wrong, but here's what I would suggest. Each department creates a list of projects that it needs for the year, I'm sorry. Each department creates a list of projects it needs for the year. After the budgets, often these budgets are based on previous years, as that's logic. Then the city council figures out who can spend what and who gets cut, what gets cut. If there's a tax increase, it's usually on the city council. However, what if the job of cutting budgets fell to each department? What if every single person took a look at their jobs and said, "I know that's how it's always been done, but what can we do differently? Can I cut the $7,000 we spend on housekeeping down to $5,000 by taking out the trash sometimes? Can we save $50 a month by using regular envelopes instead of self-sticking? It might not seem like much, but if every department can cut even 5% of their spending, it will make a huge difference." Anyone who works for the city needs to remember they're spending the taxpayers' money. None of us want taxes raised, and I truly believe if everyone could take a good, hard look at their budgets, they would find places to save. Sometimes it just takes looking at things from a different perspective to realize there's a lot of options out there. I would like to ask the heads of every department to go back to their team and brainstorm ways to save money for the city of its residents. I'm not sure if that's possible, but if so, maybe the city counts with a reconvene in two to three weeks and take a look at revised budgets. I don't want to cut any jobs and I truly think there's ways to solve this without substantially raising taxes.
Oh, hi, thanks. All right. Rainwater painter here. Mind if I stand up there just so everyone can see me? So I have a couple of questions before I speak. I'm pretty worried, I'm wondering if Matt and the city managers, you both, you could just real quickly explain what's the timeline for, is he setting the budget, implementing the budget, and then he has immediate activity? What does that actually build up to?
By and large, I strive to follow the steps. Steps of the individual I took over for. And frankly, we're about a week late. I was on vacation the first week of May and it's really when the process should have started. I was out of state. So we, as I said to Alderman Donnelly, a year ago tomorrow, the city adopted the budget for this fiscal year.
So, sorry, when does fiscal 2020 begin?
July 1.
Oh. So this budgeting process has always been within 30 days of implementation?
There's also been some dialogue into the month of July as well regarding, you know, there's, we have a fund balance, it's a moving target. You know, we don't really know until, we can estimate where we're going to come in, but we won't have a final number until the end of, probably the end of July. But yes, it's always, it always seems to be that we're up against it at the end.
Okay. And so then, on this timeline question, when's the first time that a normal, everyday taxpayer in the city would come to knowledge of an increased tax for 2020 if they were not as meaning necessarily involved? Where does that come about?
These conversations start taking place between myself and the council, again, over, you know, 30 days, 45 days prior to the end of the year. So, I mean, it's, I think if Andy, you know, if Andy probably hadn't been here at the last meeting, I'm not sure.
So it's, just when's the tax bill going to land as an enforcement step for the increase that you're reporting?
The first bill is, is it August, June 15th?
June 15th. The bill will arrive July 15th.
Okay. And then the second question I just wanted to ask is, is there any effort that's already been made to approve additional funding just for the police based upon our position as a small, warm-ass square city, which is on Vermont's second most important highway, which is an international road, frankly, and which is our, also a highway to New York State? Is there any?
The chief is a very prolific grant writer and I don't know how many hundreds of thousands, million dollars worth of grants he has procured on behalf of the city of Virginia. Most of it is equipment-based, although the department was the recipient of a governor's Highway Safety Program grant as well that is funding not only a full-time officer, but their vehicle insurance as well.
Okay. Thanks. So is that, those two questions clarified. I guess the only statement I want to make here is that I propose we act quickly to isolate. Okay, so if you're driving down a roadway, that's what we're trained to do, you're trained to deal with one thing at a time, right? There's a lot that makes me very nervous just dealing with this meeting. So the thing I'd like to do first of all is, can I propose a motion or can I, I'm going to ask if we can propose a motion?
You can make a request of the council, but a council member has to.
Okay. So my first request, after I finish, is you introduce a motion to bring the budgeting process for fiscal '21 up in the calendar year, perhaps by as much as six months. And then the other thing I wanted to say as that is, I also propose that we request this week a voluntary additional tax payment so that we can cover the police budget alone for fiscal 2020. And then, much like the school system has already done, for 2021, we allow the voters to vote, perhaps, the police budget separately. So you don't have to deal with that because it's a huge part of the city budget and because it's obviously something that so many people are aware of. Okay, so I guess I've spoken my case for now and I guess somebody would have to propose the motion for the voluntary tax payment. But I do want to say something. You know, I'll pay money, I'm a pocket right now, I'm a renter, not a landlord, towards that $200,000 as well. I guess $150,000 shortfall just for budget, police loan. So the reason I propose this is not only because I consider myself a creative person and sort of bold enough to propose these great ideas, but also because I'm aware of the historical example, the mayor of the capital of Columbia, right? Pretty rough country, obviously, heavy drug dealing, lots of rough. He did some innovative things, including inappropriately mooning the public at one point. But one of his successes was he had a night where he asked all men to stay home so the women could have a fun full night out on tap. And this worked, right? So all the men in this really rough city are, what's the name of the capital of Columbia?
Medellin.
Medellin, okay. Yeah, so the men stayed home and women had a ladies' night out as a city, right? It worked. He also literally just asked the taxpayers, "Hey, can we have more tax revenue?" And they paid. They paid. So the reason I'm doing that, I'm asking that for that tonight is just, you know, we have a lot of rocks to get out from underneath, but I feel like if we could do that, first of all, I'm pretty sure we could voluntarily raise that money. If I'm not mistaken, that's like less than $10 per inhabitant, right? Just to cover the additional, or that huge police discrepancy. Do we have 2,000 citizens who live in the city?
2,500.
We're 2,500? Okay, so right, so yeah, that's less than $10 per person. And some of us would clearly.
$25,000. 2,500 dollars, right? $10 is $25,000. We've not a $25,000.
Oh, you're.
We'd be $100 bucks.
50 bucks. So, sorry, when I'm going to, what would that, what would that budget come out at? For a first citizen, now that we have to rid it out, just to pay that $10.
$80 a week.
All right. What's that?
80 cents a week.
80 cents per week? Well, I'm just about to ask because I'm embarrassed to tell me. But anyway, and then I guess there was one other thing I wanted to, Matt, could you just speak and quantify to us the difference in missing out those 450 additional visits to Ferrisburg if we don't have to do that anymore in terms of police force? Because when I live in a police force, I think of base load and emergency response, which is a good thing. So and there's a lot of, sales want to point out, has, you know, we live at a time when everything has to be formalized and funded. I don't know where that actually came from. It's not how America was built. There was, you know, more of a, I think, a ready reserve of citizens. We didn't have to be in some kind of formal paid position to step into service and for the town. Maybe we could have a, maybe we could build sidewalks. I mean, I'd certainly be happy to do that and have professional supervision.
A downtown sidewalk.
Yeah.
A downtown sidewalk. Same thing.
This gentleman has the floor.
And I want to have my name on one square.
He has the floor.
But I, I'd also, you know, is there any, do we still have? Still there. Somebody could be sleeping but on call so that if there was a mistake at 2:00 AM, the first officer could go, you would have another officer come up and then somebody's ready, you know, to cover additional emergencies, or something like that. We've got to get creative. I mean, these problems are knocking away and they're right away. These emergencies that we're dealing with, if they feel like a big deal, you have to cover a responsible and provident, in other words, basically a golden mature, view for what you're going forward. Thanks, Chief. Thank you. Chief, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure all of you have been here, no one had. I'm here, Chief of Police, November 2009. I just want to talk a few facts of the neighborhood police. 2009, when I came here, there were five full-time officers, including myself. At the time, I also had four part-time officers. Now, four, those were part-time officers, basically assumed the same role as full-time officers. Officer Bill Wager worked a lot of hours covering shifts on the world, in McMonte Pass, in Phillip Perro. So essence, we didn't have five, we had nine, but four part-time, they were very active police officers. One of the problems with the part-time officers is because training, maintaining their proficiency and their ability to respond. Luckily for these guys, they lived in town, close by, and they did it. So fast forward to 2019. So fast forward to 2019, now we have seven full-time officers, so that's a net gain of two. Now, that's seven we paid for. We have seven full-time officers, including myself, and then we have also Mark Stacey. Mark, I'll put your hand up, please. Mark Stacey is our traffic safety coordinator position. Now, the renter was receiving through government sideways safety and needs a traffic safety coordinator for Addison County. How does that play out for us? Officer Stacey not only conducts his traffic safety coordination efforts throughout Addison County, he does so through Virgin's. He also happens to be in the area of Ferrisburg and Canton, which enables us to have another officer can respond during those times where the man or the officer work. We also have a part-time officer, Mason Cole, who ended up, Mason's in the air guard, Mason was primarily to govern the highway safety, rent money. When I talk about a government sideways safety, rent money, that's money that's allocated or given to us for grants by government sideways safety to conduct traffic enforcement efforts. That pays out for us in a number of different ways. He gets rent money through government sideways safety, which enables us to buy equipment, but the city doesn't have the base money. We've got upwards of as much as $10,000, and now it's at $5,000. So that's money that we spend, that you as taxpayers don't have to use. We also get the traffic rent. Again, we are not a corporate-based department, but we do a lot of traffic work. We have not had one paid salary in this city since I've been here. This is not about me, this is about my officers. Now, I want each one of the officers, all my officers, to put their hands up, please. Yeah, put your hand up. I've been doing this job off and on for 26 years. I was lucky enough to spend 23 years of my life in the military. I have never, ever worked with a more bunch, a better bunch of officers that subscribe to community policing, ownership of their community, and teamwork. I'll give you an example of that. On Easter Sunday, when most people are home to join their families, Officer Mark Harper was looking by himself, he had to respond to the Northern Job Corps for sexual assault record. He had to interview numerous people, numerous, and he had to handle this phone by himself. Somebody, and that's what suits somebody, the new officer, Adam Meehl and Jill Harder, called in and asked how he was doing. They came in on full time, from 7:00 that night until 2:00 the next morning. They were at the side, unpaid, never asking for compensation. I would challenge anybody in this room to find employees like that. Anybody. I will tell you this about the armed department. I can count on one hand how many times somebody's home and sick other than being a surgeon. I can give you goosebumps for how many times I've had to order an officer in to help out. On the contrary, I have to tell them we've got enough. We have challenges in this department. I don't care how big of a municipality we are, Montana Square is not answered, called how dangerous things are. I'm going to have somebody explain that to you just over the facing in a minute, so there for the police. The Northern Job Corps, 2018, and as the city manager says, we have worked very hard. In 10 years, I've seen a number of directors and staff who've said that we have worked extremely hard through training, responsive call, mentoring. We see the process start well, and then it goes south. They've done a tough job, and they do a great job there to try to help the people that are hurt, that have gotten problems. And we expect those calls to be tough, and we have to deal with it. Forty-seven calls to service in 2018, 35 calls to service thus far this year. We're not talking about pushing and shoving, Max, we're talking about sexual assault, we're talking about assaults. Sergeant J. Solet, please, put your hand up, please. Sergeant Lett, we have a threatening call that's taken him over 35 hours, but we do something to call by phone, write it down, log it, and that's it. Every one of these officers pursues a call to its nth degree. That's the quality of police officer you get. We're not a call-taking service, we are a professional service. We are your, we are part of your community. Your family is our family. When somebody in this city gets hurt, we hurt. We hurt. I go home at night, he's outside at night. J. Solet had to investigate an untimely death, a child suffocated. My officers endure that, and I don't give a damn what anybody says about those isolated incidents. We wear that. We live with that. We take that on us. Ask him how he feels about his son and his daughter, ask him about the respect he has now. People don't have any idea what we deal with as police officers. Jill Harder, on the 25th of May this year, responded to a call from another person in the department. We get those all the time. Unlaid at calls, Jill Harder had that call jumped out to a sexual assault in progress. She was alone. She was working on a Saturday morning at 9:30. Her nearest backup was 15 minutes away from the time she engaged the assailant. She goes up the stairs, she calls the victim, the victim didn't answer, she goes up the stairs with her gun drawn, by herself. I watched video. She charged towards the danger, unknowing what's going on in there. She goes up the stairs, she sees a guy six foot tall, 300 pounds, bigger than I am, not smoking, white. She commands the man to stop, he doesn't answer. He advances towards her, he turns around, she doesn't pull the trigger, the guy goes into the bathroom, she calls the victim again. That victim is sitting right here, her name is Heather. Heather, put your hand up, please. Hand for Heather, please. Heather is laying on the floor, nearly beaten to death. Officer Harder then turns around, holds his weapon, calls for rescue after hearing Heather call for help, and paves the guy, she's alone for 10 minutes. She can't put handcuffs on the guy, she can't render that a little citizen. So I would like to subject you to this, I will share this with you, this is not an isolated incident. Doesn't happen every week, but it happens often enough. Corporal Brinsland had a shot in the backside, single officer shift. Officer Lett, Sergeant Lett responds to a BOL for vehicle. The guy has a lengthy criminal background. Luckily for Sergeant Lett's ability to handle calls, he talks us away out of it and doesn't get into a fracas with the guy. The guy had used firearms, commissioned felonies, and he did several times. We talked about the what ifs. We have strafes in these buildings we never use in case we have a fire. We have fire trucks with ladders that we may use, we may not. We've got to have it, but most of the time we don't think of it. We have accomplished a lot since I've been here as the chief of police. We have 22 ways to challenge us, along with the other challenges. We have the job for young children, which we have a number of calls. We've had four school facilities, we have subsidized housing, we have a treatment center, and we have built full-time add, adding assistance. That means that every time an officer responds to a call, they have to do the paperwork from start to finish. In some cases, that's so short of work. We run seven days a week, 365 days a year, 19 to 23 hours a day. We have developed a reputation as professional, responsive, and we care about the community. I myself coach some of the kids in this school and this community as football coach. Other officers here have developed relationships with kids at the job corps or kids out on the street. I can go on and on, and I'm not going to go down a long, lengthy list of things that we've done as a police agency. We have not had no paid salary here because of our highway safety efforts. We've arrested and had brought to court over 400 DUIs, over 200 drug cases. I'm sure if I gave Officer Harder a chance to explain whether she needs two officers on a shift or not, she would reply with affirmative. Officer Harder still deals with that. I have an obligation to the city of Virgin's. My obligation when I came here is to keep you safe, whether you agree with me or not, whether our political viewpoints or life viewpoints are different, I have that obligation, and my officers subscribe to that. We do our job better than anybody else. And I will tell you this, I appreciate the mayor's confidence in us people who provide services. If we amount to officers, I tell you we will not be. I know my job, I know this job, I know what it takes to run the department. And I also have an obligation to the officers that put on the, the uniform in the Virgin's Police Department. I don't want to be the one that goes home and tells them, their family members, that they were working a single officer shift more than we had to because of the deficit of $140,000. I'm not prepared to do that. I know this is a tough situation for everybody here. I know the city council has got a tough situation facing. I would imagine the head of paperwork is glad we have F officer working, that stranded folks did. That is not a position we should ever put an officer in. If we have to say satisfied, we'll say satisfied. We should not, we should not go backwards. I'm two officers per, from a, two one officer shift, it's not more than that. It's going to cause us problems, paralyzed, I will lose officers, I can tell you that right now. It's not a threat, it's reality. My officers can go to any other department in this state and get a job that had better paying benefits. Some of these officers aren't making $21 an hour, but yet we put our badge and a gun and a vest on these guys, and every day they go out the door, they may have to take somebody's life or, sacrifice your life to protect somebody else's. Some of you may think that's a no-go tactic, I'll tell you, it's not. I ask for your support, and I know it's tough, there's got to be a way we can work with this. I would take a pay cut, I would offer the recomp, I would, I would do anything I can to protect my officers. You've got people that are fathers, you've got grandparents, they can't afford to lose their job, they shouldn't lose their job. They've given their life in the past 10 years or whatever they've worked to protect yours. Thank you very much.
All right, we can, this was all time out, so we'll take a few more comments. Yes, Andrew?
Taking some of the motions up, I think there's, there's a misconception that the council is anti-police, and that's not true. The council is figuring out how much we can afford to raise taxes to pay for everything we want. I've heard lots of people say, well, I'll pay right now, I'll pay right now. Well, we're just a subset of the larger group of people here that pay taxes. I can afford, I'll pay, I'll pay the increase, it could go to 20 cents. It's not going to, it's not going to be that big a problem for me. But the question is, where is, where is the line in the sand when you cannot raise taxes anywhere? I mean, 29 cent, 29% increase in tax, well, 18 and a half plus nine, is a big increase in tax. And if we're all willing to pay for it, and that's what you're hearing, then I don't think you're going to vote against this. But the question is, is that for everyone in Virgin's or just this group of people that are here tonight because they care?
Oh, one last quick question. There were a lot of things that were quoted and said that really didn't have any support behind them. They were people's feelings and, and their opinions. So what I'd like to say is, feelings and opinions are appropriate to voice, but please don't take them as fact.
Yes. So I'm going to agree with some of the people I've heard about going backwards as a police force is a bad choice, bad idea. Like Chief Merkel had said, you know, officers are going to get stressed, they're going to work a lot of hours. Let's say at 1:00 in the morning, something happens at one of your houses, there's no officer on duty, and your nearest trooper's, let's say, 20 minutes away. During that 20 minutes, one of your family members gets hurt, gets injured, gets killed, and that $140,000 will save their life. Or an officer's life. Have you heard of the buddy system? What's that type, especially in law enforcement? The buddy system is something we use in the fire department, something police officers use. And Matt, I'm going to tell you that lady right there, as far as grant writing, maybe you should look into it. Sit down with Merkel, talk with him, he'll tell you how to write a grant, get that money upstairs.
If I could just speak to that other question. Yep. One of the issues that we face as a community and that we are bound to the budget is many of our grant requests require a match. And in many cases, we don't have the match of 50% of whatever the grant opportunity is. So I'm just, I am all about grants, I get, you know, I think it's a great resource to us, the chief does a great job of grant writing, his grants don't tend to require a match, which I think is a great, again, a great asset to the community.
And the other thing you talked about with Goose Woods, the $30,000, did you ever charge Consolidated Communications for the road that they screwed up?
When they went and mowed under the road right after we paved it.
Because when that happened, I let them know in advance, there was a guy there, they had a chance to put a conduit over that road. Jimmy Lehrer told them, don't you dare hump this road. They did anyway, and they said, oh, it'll settle. I can pay right now, I go to Goose Woods, it hasn't settled. Have you gone back for money for them?
I have not. I will, I can certainly redouble that conversation, absolutely.
But as far as the police force, we'll name, vote up for that bigger station, bigger station, fill the employees, go on the buddy system. Personally, I'd like to see 24/7, 365, with two officers on duty every day, every shift.
That can happen. I mean, you know, the reason we're having this conversation is to try to determine what the palate within the community is for tax rate. As I said to the council last Tuesday, give me 20 cents, you know, there's a great deal that we can get done.
I can tell you, I'd pay for it.
But again, as Mr. Fritz said, you know, we are a, we are a small portion of the 2,500 people who live in the community, sir.
Going backwards is not the right thing to do because when Rick Ross hear about it, you know what's going to happen.
Okay, thank you.
It's going to go backwards.
Thank you. We have a couple of people who have not yet spoken, so go ahead now.
Thank you, Mayor Fritz. I actually have a few questions, these would be preliminary questions for the mayor. One is.
No, they can't hear you.
I have a couple of very, I have just a few very minor questions for this gentleman actually started to peg on. It's, can the, can the city council members, I understand Matt's position, he, his proposal is that the city does not need it, the police department is overstaffed, his position is crystal clear. And when he was an alderman, it really was, it wasn't that clear, but it was, he did remark that, you know, it's unsustainable. That's, so that's true. So it really doesn't surprise me that, that Matt, the city manager, is proposing this. I'm sensing that Mayor Fritz is supporting Manager Shamo's proposal. I feel as if he's supporting it for different reasons. I think if Matt really feels as if that the police department is overstaffed, Jeff, I'm sensing is that he does seem to agree with that, but there's lots of other things that need to be done. So I'm sensing that to Jeff, it's a priority, it's a priority to do other, other projects, that's what I'm sensing. I really haven't heard from the other members of the city council except for Lynn. Lynn appears to be supporting the police department to be maintained at the level that it is today. And just so that people in the room understand, the FY 2018 budget was $886,000, something like that. The current budget is $865,000. The police department is actually running in this year with a lower budget than the year before. And one of the reasons why it was able to run a lower budget is because the bond payment on the police station is paid out of the water tower fund, 72,500. And so that fund was used. So Matt's proposal is not only to cut two officers, but to also no longer fund the bonds out of the water tower fund. And in all due respect, managers, of that, three- And in all due respect, Matt, just about three seconds ago, you said it's really hard to find the matching funds. Let me just tell you, folks, on June 30th, 2018, there was $367,000 in the water tower fund. All right, just grab your annual report, turn to page 29, and it'll show you what the balance was. Split between available money and continuation fund. The money is $367,000. So don't let anybody tell you that there isn't money to matching funds. It's sitting right there. So one of the things that I struck puzzled with is where are we at today? I've heard all kinds of numbers of that there's some deficit. I don't hear the number, what it is. I've heard all kinds of different tax rates. I really feel, number one, that you aren't ready to set a tax rate tonight. I know you don't want to have more budget work sessions. I think that you do need a little bit more time, and you have it. Because I can't stand it when people rush to make a bad decision. You can't stand it. You've got some time, all right? So let's, you've got a few more days. So yes, it's true, you're one day ahead, Matt, than last year. But the city council didn't contemplate something that I'm going to call, I don't know, when I say radical, I want to say that with a small, I can't think of a better word than radical. But obviously, to get this many people in the room and get a reaction, all right? So I really want the city council to slow down just a little bit and really find out where it's at from a tax rate standpoint. I can remember dealing with this where a city council member said, "Listen, Mel, we just can't, we can't accept seven and a half cents." How can you, how can you come up with, you know, that's what I used to do. I would come up with a way to fund that. So I want to hear, number one, when did the city council as a whole hear about this reduction in the police force, number one? And number two, what's your goal? What is the number you're looking for?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mel.
So I just want to clarify some words that Mel put in my mouth regarding the size of the police department being too large. We received a $94,000 increase in our health care. That's where my entire conversation with myself about the budget started, okay? Where is that going to come from? Four and a half cents. Give me a minute, okay? As I said, at the outset, we indicated we had capacity in multiple times going to area municipalities in order to provide services to them. That inferred to me that we had at least enough help, if not too much. The water tower fund is the only discretionary fund that exists for the city council over the course of a year to either A, emergency repairs, B, matching funds, et cetera. As I understand it, yes, there is a $300-plus thousand fund, and we are only, we can only use 25% of that. Is that correct? We can use 75% of the fund. So because of the fact that we had paid for the police department bond out of the water tower fund last year, we were down to less than $112,000. This is, again, Mel, I don't have the nuance that you do. Maybe after 30 years in my chair, I will.
Grab the object. That's all you need to do. Me, my mother, you got it before I came here.
I appreciate your insight, Mel, as I always have. I am, as I think you know, still learning in this role. When I look at, we need $147,000 or we need $90,000, I'm not sure how you would go at it any differently than to take the amount of revenue that we have, look at the requirements that we have to pay our debt, to pay the dump truck bond that's coming online, pay the fire truck bond that's coming online. There are increases in our expenses that are not offset in increases in revenue. So cuts have to be made somewhere. That's my assertion. By all means, feel free to disagree. However, I'm not sure, we do have more time. A rate does not have to be set. As you said, this is my proposed budget. It is up to the council to determine how the resources that we have are allocated. That's what we're doing.
Of course, we have a couple of folks that have not yet commented. Can you hold just a moment? A couple of people have not yet spoken. Way back there, yes.
Four or five years ago, I had the distinct pleasure of walking into Chief's office downstairs and explaining to him why I was voting no against the police station. It came down to five dollars and cents. My tax bill keeps going up and up and up. And I told Chief to his face, this was not reflected in him, his job, or what he's providing to the city. It's a simple matter of technology. Now, you stated that it's out of our control because it's the score. My question is, when is the league of cities and towns going to get together and put a stop to what the state is doing to us on the taxes? If you stop that, we got more money for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think this is a dollar and cents issue. I really don't. I don't think we're seeing the force of the troops. The, I've been a first responder for 37 years, and I can tell you, there's been times that these guys have been first unseen. No matter where we were, we'd wait for state police who might be on an incident down in Orwell. And we've got a bad situation here, whether it's on Route 7 or wherever it is. But I think you've got to understand how first responders work, that there's a bond, there's a support that doesn't exist, I think, in other facets of our role. And you go destroying this foundation that's been built, you're, it's going to cost you so much more money because of the loss of officers, rebuilding a police force, and not ending up with what you have now, which would be a real shame. And I think you've got to be careful and not destroy what you've got. And you've got to, I think, your job is to figure out a way to pay for it. And the other question I have to do is, my understanding is the administration, you're paying an extra person for a period of time until they get trained, and that's a temporary thing. Is that correct?
I don't understand the question. Please, please, tell us.
Because Jonas Lee, your budget is up, but isn't that temporary?
Well, there'll be a reduction when the town clerk leaves. That position will be replaced, I'm sure.
So you have, I thought you were going to have a replacement, and that's why you have them in there?
That would be my goal. You know, part of the challenge, Michael, that I have is that we had no succession plan, even though we knew former manager Holly was leaving. It has really compromised my ability to hit the ground running in not knowing where to look for everything. And it is hunt and peck every single day. I have been able to muscle through that. I am not as convinced we are going to be able to execute that same practice at the city hall when Clerk Divine resigns. So I am trying to get somebody out there who is getting the institutional knowledge and has a better understanding of how the front office operates than I will in a side office. So that is my overall objective, yes.
Thank you, Michael. We have time for two more.
I just want to say that when you're going to vote on this budget, just keep in mind that this little city is safe because of that police department. That's all I'll tell you.
So I just wanted to make a clarification on two things. First of all, your match that you're referring to in your grants doesn't have to necessarily be cash money. It can be value of volunteers, it can be value of donated spaces and all sorts of things. So, and that does add up. I've had to do 100% match before, and I understand that it can be difficult, but there are really easy ways to have that add up. Additionally, I want to add that you mentioned Vermont State Police backup. You referred to the Kansas State Police there. I have worked on, do work directly with Vermont State Police, who made me there, because all the law enforcement in this county. And I can tell you with absolute certainty that they also deal with staffing issues and have been on a roller coaster of staffing issues, and that they're not always available to do backup. And so it's not a viable security for us here.
Thank you. One last comment.
Thank you. I apologize because I knew you could say two more. I am now a citizen. I'm a business owner. I live outside of the area. You pay taxes, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I have voted very fond of the police department. I've been a business here for 21 and a half years. And my first purchase of the business took me now long. The police department was on shaking ground. And there were many hours during the week, especially on weekends, Sunday especially, when there wasn't even coverage. And we needed to rely on the state police from the State Department. And they did show up, and they did the best we could at that time. I'm not prepared to make a statement of what the services were like today in the power. But sometimes we only had two for northern part of Addison County. Also, the Sheriff's Department, which I'm also very high on, I was on the sheriff news election committee. But they run more as a Monday through Friday operation and do administrative work for the most part. They're not really available, to the best of my knowledge, on the weekends. Unfortunately, we were held near a small city market in southern part of the city. And we were at a rock and gun point almost a year ago today. And Officer Greensland responded. I live about 18 minutes away. And there's a young gentleman who was about 19 years old. He'd only been there three weeks. Nice way to get broken in. And by the time I got in there, and I left my house almost immediately, Officer Lepp had come from his home. I think he does know some distance away. And very shortly thereafter, Chief Merkel arrived. It wasn't until about four or five minutes after that that a state police officer arrived, who I'm going to assume had been phoned immediately by dispatch when Officer Greensland had been first called. The professionalism that I saw then, and I'm going to confess, Chief Merkel was a very first front of mine. Whether he feels that way or not. And the reason I feel that way is because the level of integrity that I've seen, that he has mentored his police department, is second to none. I grew up in Middlebury. I spent a lot of time in the cities, with the College of Burlington. And I've never seen a force that's more approachable by the people. And I witnessed that in my store when they come in, this port apartment can't even come in for a cup of coffee without being guarded. And my hat's on too. I'll get back and tell you like a rock. They were there most of the night. State police, more police started building up, reviewing my surveillance cameras, so I got peer shot of all the information that was going on, the networking. It was going on back and forth. And I also encourage you, I hope that something can come of working with Pan Ferrisburg because that's important information. I'm not going to share what was discussed, but there's a lot to discuss because they really know what was going in in those surrounding towns. And residents of Virgin's benefit from all that. But the bottom line is, I'll try to cut this short, is the federal prosecutor, this Vicente Faradis, I'm sure, backup, had also hit, over the course of the time before he was caught, at least five other banks, okay, from Kansas, a street that started in Texas and on through the Wex. The federal prosecutor, he was a portion of Vermont custody, had decided to use my business as robbery because of the work that the Virgin's Police Department had done in preparing that for the prosecutor. That's pretty impressive for a small community, and that made me even more impressed, you know, for the fact that my store was going to be picked. And so I just, I don't know, I didn't read anything about it. It kind of lost its way in the news. You know, there's announcement that we can rob other stores of state, on the state. And I think that kind of got lost between, you know, the cracks. That's key, and it speaks volumes to professionalism and leadership that this department has. And I fear, although I won't, you know, it's no small task, good job. And I don't think anybody's here is accusing you as members of council of saying, "We don't have great police department." I do want your job. And I do fear that if we make a cut today, we are going to pay down the road and once again find ourselves perhaps in negative, I hope we're never negative we were when I came in 21 and a half years ago. But I think it's going to take us a lot more to build the department back up to where it is. And I'm not as sure we can. And I'm not just saying that as a threat. We have a really quality group of people. The work really talks. And that's part of the law. We've kind of come to expect that, and sometimes we put aside the fact that they need to be compensated. Everybody needs to be compensated. Long gone are the days when we can volunteer all of our efforts besides our own job and raising our families. So I appreciate you hearing me, and thank you very much, and good luck to you.
Thank you. One last comment.
My, my, a brief, I just, I am a taxpaying resident, and just yesterday morning, I live in Virgin's, I work in Middlebury. I was walking to the bus stop at 6:30 in the morning to catch a bus down to Middlebury. And as I'm walking up Green Street, I noticed a man on the other side of the street on the sidewalk, clearly very agitated and walking quickly, and I just kept going. And then about a block later, I saw a woman coming down screaming her head off at the man, and him finally yelling back at her, and I'm like, "Okay, well, it's a domestic dispute." One of the most dangerous things that can occur because of all the passion involved. And I was starting to think about getting my phone out to call the police and thinking of my own safety, gee, does anyone have a weapon there? And how quickly can I get up to the top of the street? And they ducked into the shelter on Green Street, and I figured, all right, it seems like it's stable. They're going to be dealt with there. But I'm just saying that, you know, I love Virgin's. I've only lived here a couple of years, and I'm just so in love with this city. And I was just at the band concert Monday night. The whole town, I think, showed up for the opening night of the band concerts. But it doesn't mean that stuff isn't going on, that there aren't a lot of troubled people around that any of us could encounter. I walk constantly through town with my big dog. A lot of people know me because of my big dog. But just knowing that there is a very qualified, competent police force that I can call like that and know that there's going to be a response. Last summer, it was my first summer, and I was walking up Green Street to go to the band concert and came that close to losing my wife to, and the woman behind me said, "I thought you were a goner." Because the light changed, and I started to walk across Main Street to get to the town green. And the sports car blew the red light, was flying through town, and of course, had moved the place. So there's a lot to deal with in this town, small cities, you know. I'm just amazed at how much there is to deal with here, and I can't express enough my gratitude. And I wanted to ask one question. What does the city council need from the residents to influence you in your decision? Do you need us to go home and tell all our neighbors to call you? I mean, I'll do that. What do you need? I mean, you've got the small amount of people here, which of course, everyone who shows up at a meeting represents a whole lot more people that feel the same way. But if you need more people to call you, and then I understand too, you could probably all...
I think what we need to hear is that we're willing to pay, what they need.
I'm already looking in the budget. $37,000 we give away. We give away, and I know that they are, these places are beneficial, but we give, we're giving $5,000 to the Boys and Girls Club. That's great. We're giving, you know, $900 to this, it's right on our voting ballot. I don't know, I've always wondered why that's on our voting ballot. I've always voted no, but it always seems to go through.
Yes, ma'am, that's an issue beyond the scope of this meeting, though, unfortunately. Because that's a matter that's before the voters, not the city council, unless I'm mistaken. Am I correct?
Those who voted are correct.
Right, but what I'm saying is...
So those organizations petition the city for those funds.
Why is that even on the ballot?
Because those organizations petition the city requesting funding.
They have our hands. We have many public votes.
Right.
We lost a Supreme Court case. A number of years ago, if you look at our city charter, the charter says very, very clearly that the Board of Aldermen sets the budget. The sitting Board of Aldermen, the history of it was, it was challenged by a nonprofit. They came to the city. Mel, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if I've got my history wrong, you know it. There was a nonprofit that approached the city seeking funds. The city said no. They sought to petition the voters. The Board of Aldermen took the position that that was not in keeping with the city charter and we took it as far as we could legally and we lost. So unfortunately, that's the position that we're in. Did I get that right, Mel?
Right. Thank you everyone for your comments.
I would like my question.
Actually, I'm about to address that with the council. I think it's a very fair question that we were asked. I would remind everyone that as we stand today with this proposed budget, we are looking at a tax increase of twelve point five cents. The addition of two officers is approximately six cents.
Correct.
Correct. Which will then take us to eighteen and a half cents. So the proposal that we're looking at, the very bottom line is setting our tax rate at approximately ninety-four cents per hundred dollars. So that's, that's, that, I don't know how I can be more clear than that. I'm sorry. So it is the council's turn to make some comments. And there has been a question asked of us.
Can you answer the question?
That's...
That's what he's doing.
Yeah, I worry about tomorrow. What you just said.
We are currently at twelve and a half cents, given the budget as it is proposed, which includes the reduction of two officers. So our proposed increase includes that cut and approximately ninety thousand dollar deficit. To meet that, we will need to raise our tax rate twelve and a half cents. And then, what was, oh, so then in order to maintain... Twelve and a half.
Raise it to eighty-three and a half.
Eighty-three.
That's it.
Yes.
All right, so that's ninety-six.
Pardon me, I'm sorry. I did, I misspoke it. So we're at ninety-six cents.
Without the...
Without the officers.
So it'd be a dollar two if we add the officers.
A dollar two if we add the officers. Thank you. Now, I do would like to have this woman's question answered.
I appreciate your input, I mean, your question, and I appreciate the input of everybody that's here, because I, I only got a couple of comments, to be honest with you. I was amazed. I mean, now Lynn, you've been bombarded. And I, I was mayor and I admire the police department more than anything. I supported the police station, the new police station. And I also respect the affordability issue. And I'm really not sure, I still haven't made up my mind, to be honest with you. At the budget meeting last week, I tried to make a compromise and said, you know, let's, let's move some money around and pay for some expenses out of other funds. And I would support one person reduction. I think two is too much too fast. I think if you're going to change something, you should change it incrementally so that if we find that's not appropriate, we can always go back. But I'm, but I'm, you know, the support that I'm seeing tonight, if people want to, want to pay the bill, then if I keep hearing that, then I think that that's something that we need to hear.
Yeah, if people want to reach out, I've had emails, I've had a few phone calls, have talked to people through, a lot of times I get somebody on the phone who just says, "This is, we can't do this." And then we talk for fifteen, twenty minutes. And at the end, they're like, "You're right, this is a lot more complicated than I started out thinking. It's not just this one thing. We want to do so many other things." It's not just a raise on this year. It was a raise on last year, it's going to be a raise on this year. The raise then becomes part of the standard, and then we're going to have a raise next year. And kind of the sub-story we're hearing is that, you know, the eight officers we have now really aren't enough. We really like to have twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. So we're looking at more like, what, twelve or fourteen officers that we really like to have available, which would be possible at some point. But that means we're going to still go up and up. This is going to be on top of the fact that we need a brand-new water treatment plant. Next couple of years, we're probably going to be looking at a thirty, thirty-five million dollar bond. That's going to be a couple hundred dollars more a year in taxes to have...
As a sewer treatment plant.
The sewer treatment, not water treatment, sorry, the sewer. There are a lot of things that are happening. We're an aging infrastructure. Even if we're not trying to build brand-new things, we still have to maintain what we have. A couple of years ago, I spent many an hour in our municipal pool, ripping apart my hands, fixing the holes that had been slowly forming. We really need to have the entire pool resurfaced if we want to keep that as one of our assets, which I heard over and over again, that we really need this. When I build a new pool, that's a five million dollar cost. You had my labor for free, but my labor was only going to work for a few years. It was a stopgap. It was a Band-Aid to get on there. It was just a lot of concrete and a lot of ripped up hands. But it needs a new thing. And that's going to be a couple hundred thousand. But we've heard from many people, pool's very important to us. We have to have that. I've heard from members of this council over the years and from people in the city, you keep raising the taxes, you're going to drive people out. No business is going to come here. The older residents who have lived here all their life cannot afford it anymore. They're going to have to move out. I don't know who comes here. The group here is saying, "Go ahead, raise my taxes." And as was said, there are some of us that could do it. I'd be happy to raise my taxes. I am not maybe the average resident. I am basic middle class. I could probably find the money. I could change around. That means half or more of this residency is, in this town, is more. We, we have a free and reduced lunch population in Virginus of about fifty percent. So half of our families that are here are below poverty line. Their residents too, they're not going to be able to take this. So it's not an easy call. It is a dollar and cents call, though. It is a matter of what can we continue to keep paying? And it's not just this one time. Whatever we add tonight or when we finally make this becomes the standard basis that we will now add to next year, because it's going to go up again. The inflation just goes, the cost of fuel is going to go up a little bit, the cost of anything else. There's always going to be a slight increase. It's going to go up. Just what can we stomach and what can we afford to keep the town that we like as the town we like? If you drive out all the residents and bring in everyone who wants their second home, it becomes a different town.
I think, now I'm the first to admit that I'm, I don't have the historical perspective that a lot of folks on this council and many, many folks in this room have. I've heard stories. I can give you the perspective of someone who recently moved here, and I've spoken to a number of young families who've recently moved here. You know, why did you move to Virginus? Why did you choose Virginus? Why didn't you move to Middlebury? Why didn't you move to Burlington? Why didn't you move to any of the neighboring towns? They moved here because it's a safe city. They moved here because they can walk to a bunch of great restaurants and shops. And those shops are servicing us as residents, they're servicing tourists. We have amazing access to natural resources, the river, the lake, the mountains on both sides of us. I think I realize why people don't run for city council now. It's, yeah, it's hard, truly, this is extremely difficult and painful for everyone here to look at these numbers and try to figure out, how do we make this work? People move here because of the pool and the great infrastructure and the schools and the tight-knit community. We're trying to figure out how all twenty-six hundred residents can get the services that they need from the city and also to pay for those services. And that's where we're really struggling. And frankly, I hear all the time, ever since, I lived in California before I moved back to Vermont five years ago. And I moved here and everyone kept saying to me, "Why did you move to Vermont? The taxes are so high. It's so expensive to live here. It's so unaffordable." And I just moved from San Francisco. So my perspective was like, really? But they're right. You look at the average income, you look at the folks that are below poverty line in our community, and you look at this big picture and it's real, it's spot on, you know? And it took me a number of years to really realize exactly what I was looking at across the board. And that's really where we're, where we're struggling as a council. You know, I've done a lot of researching online of, do more police equal less crime? Unfortunately, all those studies are about Oakland, California, and Detroit and Atlanta, and it's really, there's no, there's no studies on twenty-six hundred-person cities that are conclusive. And frankly, those big ones aren't conclusive either. You have mostly a lot of opinions. You know, and I one hundred percent believe that having a strong police department is important for a place such as Virginus because of all the special reasons that we have pointed out. I, I completely credit the chief and the department on making this a wonderful, safe place to live. I do also don't want to ignore and trivialize all the other aspects that make this a safe, really welcoming town, or city to live in. People move here because, for the infrastructure. I believe that crime rates go down because of economic conditions as well. So I, I think we should not ignore the fact that over the last twenty-plus years in Virginus, economic conditions have improved with jobs in Middlebury, jobs in Burlington, jobs here in Virginus. People move here for those jobs because they can support their families. So if we're hearing that people are looking for a, are supporting a significant tax increase, then that's something that we need to hear from the citizens of Virginus, because I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing from people, I can hear from both sides of the story, but I certainly haven't had as many people as Lynn reach out to me. You know, that this police department, for the size of the town and the number of people, seems extremely large. And people reaching out to me and saying, "I don't feel that the crime rate will go down because of having one or two less officers on the force." And that's what I've heard from people. So I'm hearing a lot of different things at this meeting tonight. I do want to make a note, I feel like we've used sidewalks as like a really great way to trivialize infrastructure investment. This sewer system and everything that I've learned from, when I was buying my house in Virginus, everyone would mention things about the combined sewage overflow and mention the dirty river and the dirty lake. And to me, one thing that we need to be thinking about for people moving here and living here is that they're not going to move here if they continue to hear about our dirty water. They're also, property owners in this city are going to have a real hard time selling their properties if we have a major, major issue with our sewer system and don't have the money set aside to pay for it. So from a property value perspective, we really need to keep that in mind and be investing in the future of our infrastructure. And so that is the struggle that I really have is, you know, I don't want to trivialize infrastructure by talking about sidewalks. Sidewalks are extremely important. Plowing those sidewalks, salting those sidewalks is extremely important. But I want to make sure we're thinking about the greater infrastructure, the McDonough pump station, all of this. I have a hard time with, the word backwards has been used a lot and looking back and being afraid of what it was like. And I think that a gentleman earlier said that we're seeing a lot of that kind of conversation on the national and local level. I want to, I want people to not think that investing in all of these areas of our city is also a way looking to the future. And that includes a strong police department. I just, I just have trouble with this idea of the, of using the term backwards and not fully funding, because the police department is fully funded based on how the city wants it to be. Right? That's how you fully, that's how we set a budget. We fully fund the budget of this is what the police department is. So we need to think about what that looks like going forward. And if the citizens of Virginus are reaching out to everyone in this council and saying, "Raise our taxes by twenty cents," then, then we have an easy decision to make. But I fear that we're not hearing that.
Thank you. Go to this direction.
I think that any time you begin a discussion about a financial management issue, you really have to start with what you know and what you don't know, or what you think you know. And, and it's important that when you do that, you challenge assumptions. And so I'll tell you what I think I know. What I, what I think I know is this, I think that we're headed toward a recession. I'm not the only one that thinks that. And again, these are a lot of things that we don't necessarily have control over. Vermont is in an economic crisis, no matter how you spin it. Our unfunded debt obligations are three, three and a half times gross annual revenue. So if you think about that number for a minute, what that means is, is that every single individual in the city, in the city, in the state of Vermont, men, women, and children, we owe about six thousand dollars in debt. Okay? That's significant and it is at or near the top relative to every other state in the entire country. So when we're talking about making these decisions here, we're not only taking into consideration things at this micro level, at least me, I'm trying to balance them with what's happening globally. That's my business. My other life, I work as a consultant and I will tell you, it does not look good. And there's people that are a lot brighter than me, a lot older than me, and have a lot more experience, and that's what they're telling me. So when we're talking about this thing and we're talking about a dollar tax rate, Mel and I've been around a long time. If, 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 if that's where that number is ending up, that's a stretch. It may not, it may not seem it, but it is. So talking about what we know, I don't know what that number is. I don't know what that, I know what I think it looks like, if that's, if that's what the number ends up with. I don't think we know that that's what it is at this point. So that's a question that needs to be addressed. The other question that needs to be addressed, and I think that Chief has to be given the opportunity to do so, at least from my perspective. I, I would like him to specifically tell every one of us, what does this look like? What does seven officers look like? What does, and bearing in mind that we do not have, we do not have twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five coverage. We have shifts that do not have two officers on. And I agree a hundred percent that that's not best practice. It's not safe. It's not, it's not a good thing. So what does seven officers look like? What does five look like? And we can come to some consideration relative, to some conclusion relatively quickly, that there's a lot of holes there. And... I'm asking you that. And then I'll continue with, with what I'm talking about.
I can tell you what seven officers look like. Stand up, sorry. Stand up, sorry. Officer Harder. Stand up, officer. There are officers, Officer Basison, Officer Leo, and Officer Harder. These are the officers to speak to right now. Stand up, officer Basison. Part-time officer, he works for government's highway safety. Basically, he does highway safety for one shift that's come out of the city bus. Okay, go ahead and sit back down. Officer Stacy, stand up. Officer Stacy is the Addison County Traffic Safety Coordinator. He is a non-entirety as far as money, we don't, we don't pay for him. Go ahead and sit down. So of these seven officers, we work seven days a week. Our normal shifts run anywhere from seven in the morning till two in the morning. Sometimes we run from seven in the morning till zero six the next morning. When we do an analysis based on need, and it's kind of like laughing at words, best way I can explain it here. We took all the days a week, we took all the times of the day, and we tried to figure out what days of the week, what hour periods do we have most calls for service? It's hard to determine when a serious call is going to pop up. It could be one of those days you plan for, or it could be one of those days you don't. But I will tell you that there is wisdom to, to officer shifts, why we, I am a proponent of that. And I know we can't go to that now. I have a solution. Maybe we can do that somewhere in the near future. Officer Harder was nearly in a position where she had to take a man's life. By the grace of God, she made the right decision. There's a reason I'm explaining this. If you have two officers there, a sandwich or less at to go after one, or two officers rather than one. A second officer may see something. Now, when you're in one of those positions where you're about ready to draw your weapon and you draw your weapon, it's a clear phenomenon. It's a, it's a legitimate phenomenon, you're a tunnel vision. You see and hear nothing else. But that second officer may be the person that stops the... But that second officer may be the person that stops the other officer from making a poor judgment call. We can never say what's going to happen. But I will tell you, they do make a difference, it does make a difference. If a bad call was made, and we see that time and time, who knows fault of the officer other than the fact that they're human and they're scared, and they're not seeing anything that's going on, you think we've got a budget problem now? I know we've got insurance. We'll go through, if an officer gets hurt, we're going to have a problem. Might have no issues with telling me, you ever go to the, come to the table and tell me about problems, great solution. I don't have it. These guys have got a tough job here, no good ways about it. But I will tell you that I think that regionalized services is the way of the future. We see the schools, we see the fire departments, and we need to do the same thing with police work. The town of Pan and the town of Ferrisburg benefit by the mere proximity of the city of Virgens. They benefit from the services that we provide to our citizens. By virtue of the fact we're police officers, we're a force to protect people, we have to go to those calls to domestic and accidents. I was on my way to a meeting the other day, and I had stopped to take care of an accident where a car got rear-ended, a woman was wandering around the street, you already got hit by a car. I'm not going to lie, that's not what I'm all about, whether I'm a cop or not. Corporal Williams, Rickson had to come up, and then the state police came up and backed us up. State police backed us up, and we backed them up. But I will tell you, on the morning that Officer Harder was working long and dealt with the incident with Cora Heather in, two police officers were, had that incident happened 30 minutes earlier, a backup officer would have been in form. So get to Dave's point, one of the challenges, it takes a lot of time to process cases. I gave the city council, I can share it with anybody, what does it take to process a case? So we have a time limit. What we have in assault could be two hours, it could be 10 hours. There's a lot of follow-up, and we have to do all the paperwork. So when I talk about calls for services in Northland Job Corps, I'm not trying to pick on, pick on the poor Northland Job Corps, but we've got a lot of calls for service here, and they're not small calls. When you talk about sexual assault, you're talking anywhere from five hours to 30 hours. We have, and whenever we have these incidents, I give you, all of what it is, the job corps has kids that come from non-traditional family settings, no fault of their own, and they make mistakes. That's what correctly these police officers did here. I did not have one student go up to white police officers. We buy them pizza, we buy them soda, we treat them as human beings, and they go home with a different perspective on one person. So Northland Job Corps itself presents a problem, always will. You can call it whatever you wish, you can say what you want, you can put all the paint on the walls, it's still going to be the same issue. John Granger's shelter is also going to be, because it's a traditional housing. They supposedly have a standard there, a lot of people in. When we had, this is where the people that went there had violent behavior, drug behavior, assault, whatever else, we spent a lot of time in this last year. So in answer to Dave's question, these are challenges that you don't understand unless you're police officers. The answer might, one of the answers, one proposed one, that I worked on this, and I think you still need to work on it. To answer the question about Ferrisburg and Pan, had we got those seven officer positions or contracts, it would have been one hour a day, five days a week, one in Pan, one in Ferrisburg. That's sort of, and we could absorb that easily without a stamp, without the others, and it would have brought approximately $30,000 had we got those contracts. I say that we should try, again, I'm not the city council member, but I like the idea of regionalized police. Everybody benefits in Virgens. Why shouldn't they try, maybe the candidates can kick in, kick in to help us defray some of those costs? They benefit, of course. I think it's wise, and the state police are a challenge. The Addison County Sheriff's Department is a part of our organization.
Chief, I'm, I, I...
Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry.
So essentially, what we're at here is, we want to continue with seven officers, or as Chief has alluded to, at some point, expand, as a couple other people had mentioned, expand. Bill had mentioned 24/7, 365. That's revenue to pay for that, and revenue needs to come from somewhere. It doesn't appear out of thin air. And so I'll tell you where this revenue is going to come from, it's going to come out of your checkbooks. And if that's okay with you, you tell us, and it'll happen. What's that? You, I'm hearing it tonight, okay? But talking about revenue, and Chief made a very, very good point, relative to Northland's Job Corps, and I feel like I'm beating a dead horse here, but, you know, the fact that there's a facility here in the city of Virgens that serves and deals with the socioeconomic problems of Greater New England and a city of 2,600 people is paying for it, that is absolutely and completely egregious, that is totally wrong. And as far as I'm concerned, if they don't start to pay us, they can leave. They can pack up their tent and go, and there's a way to accomplish that. They're on a year-to-year lease, and if we exert enough pressure on the state of Vermont, they will not renew that lease. So there's some revenue, okay? That's about $100,000, is that correct, Mel? That's what they use to pay us. I didn't make that mistake and drop the ball, none of these other people did. That was a city council a number of years ago that dropped that ball, and we're dealing with it today. The other piece of it, in terms of when we're talking about revenue, Virgens has an inordinate amount of subsidized housing for a community of this size, and it's a whole separate discussion in terms of the financial impacts of that, but I will tell you that housing does not, across the board, create positive economic impact. If it did, the most populous places in this country would also not be the most expensive. So when you have a situation where, where a community of this size is dealing with a level of subsidized housing that we have here, and there's people talking about more, that's lost tax revenue. Because those buildings, because of actions that occurred at the state level, they do not, they always used to receive a discount, now they essentially have a license to steal if they chose to do so. They're only taxed on their income stream, and it's a whole separate discussion, but it is not right, and it is not right for this community or any other community to shoulder the burden of that alone. Drug treatment facilities, these are all impacts, and every time there's an impact, it costs money. And particularly in light of Job Corps and subsidized housing, that's money that's not on the table. So we're left with a very, very difficult, miserable decision, no matter how this goes. I've been, I was an alderman a long time, and I came back on a few years ago. If somebody told me 20 years ago that we'd be sitting here approaching a dollar tax rate, I wouldn't have believed it. But here we sit. So in answer to your question, what do we need to hear? You know, like Matt said, give us 20 cents. You know, if you, I'll caution you this, though. You know, we've heard a lot about, we've heard a lot about peaceful communities. I want everybody to think about, and again, some of these issues are more global in scale, I want everybody to think about how peaceful things are. When we're putting people's houses up for tax sale due to us or the school or the state or whatever, and people are banging it out in the street, and these guys are showing up to try to deal with them, you know? This, a whole other discussion, but globally, things are not looking good. So if you want to spend the money, and we got a lot of things to spend the money on, you tell us what you, where you're, how much pain you're willing to bear, because we will find a place to spend it.
Thank you. Lowly, have any comments?
I really don't have much else to add, they've done a pretty good job of saying everything. I'm definitely in favor of keeping the police force as it is. I plan on rolling up my sleeves to see what we can cut out. I don't want to see us pay an 18 and a half more cents. I think we can get it lower than that, but I really want to, I want to hear from everybody else. So if we give the public a couple more days to reach out to us, please encourage your friends, your neighbors, to reach out to us, give us their opinion, so we can make an informed decision within, within a week's time. Thank you.
Ask them to give them opinions, give us some alternatives. Just saying, "Don't do it," it gives you, yeah, that doesn't help us to figure out how. Matt's figured out a way how, and we're deciding whether or not that's the right way. If you don't like that way...
...we're going to have this conversation again based on some other crisis.
Which is why I need to know why.
...we need to get out of the need to fight.
Yeah, I, I'm completely there with you, but that's what I'm saying, you can't just say, "We don't like that budget, do something else." We need to know what that something else looks like in your minds.
So it is, it is the 25th of June today, and we have until the 1st of July to make our decisions, and time is certainly running short, and I have a sense that we need at least one more session. Does everyone agree with that?
Probably at least one more.
At least one more session. So I look at the calendar and ask when you all might be available for another session. I am not available tomorrow, I am not available on Thursday, I am available Friday evening, and I am available Saturday morning.
I can be Saturday morning.
I'm not around Saturday.
I'm available whenever you need me.
Are you available on Friday?
I am.
Are you available on Friday?
I will make it work.
Okay.
I just would like to say one conclusion to what I've heard tonight, and it seems like maybe it's a little bit different than what David said. But I, what I'm hearing tonight from these people, and you, anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, is that you're supporting, maintaining the police department, but I'm not necessarily getting the feeling that you agree to 20 cents or 15 cents or whatever it is. And I think the idea of looking at the whole budget and saying, "Every budget needs to take a hit," is more rational than saying, "We're going to add to the tax rate." Now, if I've gotten that wrong, I want somebody to say something, but that's how I summarize tonight's meeting.
I agree.
I agree. Everybody's got to take a hit.
Not to pay for it, as I'm already saying, we just want everything and not pay for it.
No, we're saying, we're saying we're facing, she's saying we're facing cuts and she would like them, she's seeing that one of the impressions she's received is to distribute those cuts.
As opposed to only shrinking...
Among different departments.
Yes.
I think it is important to point out here that we've cut and cut and cut, there's not a lot left to cut from other budgets in the city. There's so much volunteer work going on here, because there's just not money, just for the basic interest. Those cuts have been made.
And many departments have been at status quo below for a number of years. So to say, "Well, you haven't gotten anything really for the last four or five years, we need to cut you," isn't exactly fair either, because they're running subpar on some, some things.
What about the recreation director that is supposed to be being hired?
That is specifically asked for time and time again by the public, every time there's any sort of public outreach. That has come a lot, for years, for years.
Exactly.
It's been $15,000.
That's fixed, you're right.
$15,000.
Please, please, we're getting a little out of order here. I appreciate that you haven't had a chance to talk. We are going to have another session this coming Friday at 5:30. I'm sorry? Feel free to email me with your comments.
Do you actually announce it at the meeting on Friday?
I will, if you are interested in doing so. I will absolutely do that. Yes.
Right here. Thank you.
Is it, is it all possible to make the meeting be a little bit later?
Certainly, we can have it at 6:00 PM.
From Burlington, who can mute, can make the meeting?
6:00 PM. This is 6:00 PM on Friday, work for everyone.
That would be wonderful, because the bus hits off around 6:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
One moment.
Yes, yes, just a moment.
I would encourage the council to come to the meeting on Friday at 6 o'clock with some decisions, and we are not in a position to continue to have dialogue.
Jeff, just tabling.
We'll table it.
Table last meeting.
We are tabling this discussion, and we will resume Friday at 6:00 PM.
Not in the U.S., I just looked it up today.